December the 20th, 2016. No, would you leave us in the pledge tonight, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Present.
Commissioner Monette? Here. Commissioner Sweeney?
Present.
Chair Kistner?
Here.
Next item is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of the restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in any discussion or take action on matters not described on this agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Are there any public comments? Closed public comments. Consent items. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any item be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. Does anyone want to pull anything?
I wanted to pull the minutes. I'm sorry to say again, but I have a question about them.
And I'd like to pull item 4.2, please.
And the minutes I want to pull are, I think, the last ones, yeah. Um, okay. 6:15. Oh, what am I talking about? Yeah, 11:15. So you want me to start?
Yeah, why don't you pull?
Okay, I just thought on item 6.2. I might be remembering wrong, but I thought that Commissioner Sweeney had asked for, or asked if we were going to get the summary that was going to be made by the public, by Noah, at some point. And I thought you said yes, but I'm, if so, I wanted to, I wanted to see that, but I'm not, now I'm not certain that that happened. You didn't say, I thought you did.
I don't think in terms of, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't recall it in a way that it was to come back to the commission. If I'm not mistaken, that was... I mean, that wasn't an action item that would be a minute in this format, right?
It wasn't, but I thought that you were, had been interested, because I was too interested in seeing.
But I don't, I think that would be part of the video minutes, but it wouldn't be something that's an action item, right, that we have to?
So the direction from the commission was to provide a summary of determinations made regarding building permits for design review?
I think so, because we had all given, you were going to do that, and I thought, I just, I didn't see that in there, that you were going to give us a summary.
Staff did receive that direction, however, it wasn't a voted-on item, so it wasn't included as an action item in the minute.
Okay, are we still going to get it, though?
That direction was provided, and staff doesn't tend to provide the summary.
Okay, do you have any, what the form will be, or how we'll get that back?
I have not worked that out yet.
Okay.
I think we, I think we signed off on one minor revision. I can't even remember what it is today, but we will provide maybe a summary monthly, or we'll have to work out the format and the timing.
Okay, all right.
But that, that direction was from the commission, and staff did, is completely supportive of.
Okay, thanks.
And I'd like to pull 4.2. I'd like to look at page 23. I believe in the staff report, they indicated that this could be done with a, with a variance or...
So the issue before the, the issue with the situation is there's currently a deck that's built up against the property line and a staircase built across the property line. They're owned by the same owner. The intent is just to essentially rebuild and reconstruct this existing non-conforming deck. However, the building code doesn't allow structures across property lines without some method of addressing that. Staff is supportive of the design in that it's essentially just repair of a non-conforming situation, however, we do feel it's important to address the structure over the property line, and so we've provided a condition that allows flexibility in how that's addressed. The preferred method would be some type of access easement or allowance that would allow the, the structure to be in the current location, but then wouldn't be, wouldn't make the approval of the building permit a violation of the code. And so that's the approved or the proposed method, but we haven't formalized that methodology currently, and staff felt that leaving it open to options would allow the applicant more discretion in how they want to address it. Obviously, if they were to propose a variance, they would have to come back before the commission.
Well, that was, that was my question. It appeared to me as an and/or or situation, and it wasn't clear to me what the or situation was.
Just trying to read the specific language of the condition, bear with me.
I guess the language wasn't clear to me.
This condition 13?
I'm page 23, Bobby, it's number 13.
Yeah, so currently, it says...
Or by other legal methods, is what it says.
That's correct. So the applicant's required to address that construction, and there's flexibility in how it's addressed. Obviously, if it triggers another discretionary action, it would have to come back before the commission.
Okay, but you can do an easement.
That, from staff's standpoint, it is allowed methodology. I know the applicant's had some discussions with their civil engineer, and there's been some differing in opinions as to the best way to address it, and so that's why we, we wanted to have the flexibility.
Okay.
Also on that item, there's an error in the, under, under the general plan on page 14 of 134. It says that the residential densities shall be in the range of 5.1 to 12. It's to 16. I think that happened on another.
It did. I must be getting the information from the same location. Thank you for that, and I will correct it.
Okay. I wish it were 12. I mean, maybe if you'd just change everything?
Are there any further questions?
No.
I guess we need a...
Do I hear a motion to prove the consent calendar then with the corrections we've talked about?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Next item is 5.1, requesting a demolition permit and design review approval on behalf of property owner John McGraw to demolish the existing single-family residence and construct a single-family residence and appetature improvements at 1225 Allen Avenue in St. Elia. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you. Chair Kistner? So the project before you is the McGraw residence. The applicant is requesting a demolition permit and design review approval to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new single-family residence at 1225 Allen. The subject property is a residential lot of approximately 9,000 square feet or 0.2 acres. It's improved with a one-story, 2,000-square-foot, single-family residence that was constructed circa 1952. The existing residence has been vacant for an unknown period of time and is currently in disrepair. At present, the site exhibits a floor area ratio of .220. The proposed residence would be single-story with a living area of approximately 2,700 square feet with attached 267 square-foot garage. The residence would be clad in a combination of shiplap, board and batten, and painted brick veneer with a standing seam metal roof and would be punctuated with Milgard Essence Series windows. It would feature a maximum height of 19 feet 9 inches, as measured at the peak of the roof, and landscaping would consist mostly of low-water-use plantings with a few moderate-water-use plantings. The property exhibits a general plan and zoning designation of medium-density residential, which allows for the reconstruction of one single-family home. The proposed residence serves as infill development in an already-urbanized area, thereby reducing pressure on areas outside of the urban service area. The design features traditional building forms with contemporary details, which strengthens the neighborhood identity and complements the other homes that are in the vicinity. Likewise, the siding and configuration of the residence is generally consistent with that of the neighborhood, and the garage will be kind of subordinate to the main residence in an effort to avoid being overly imposing. A variety of landscaping that includes shrubs and trees will soften the look of the new residence and provide continuity with other lots, given that the project appears to be consistent with applicable general plan policies. Under the zoning code, a nine, approximately 9,000-square-foot parcel is allowed a maximum floor area of .32, which equates to a maximum square footage of 2,884 square feet. The applicant is proposing a total floor area of approximately 2,780 square feet or an FAR of .308, which is below the maximum permitted. The residence will exhibit a minimum setback of 20 feet at the front and rear of the property and 10 feet at the side yards with a maximum height of 19 feet 9 inches. And then it will provide one covered parking space and one uncovered parking space. And with that, it appears to comply with all the development criteria, including height, setback, parking, and floor area prescribed by the zoning code. As provided in the zoning code, no permit authorizing the demolition of a building shall be issued unless it can be found that, one, the building is not a significant historic resource, and, two, that the demolition would not eliminate essential characteristics of the neighborhood. The existing residence was constructed in 1952, and because of that, it does meet the age requirements to be listed as a historic resource. And so a historic resource evaluation was prepared by consultants Evans and DeShazo. That HRE concluded that the residence did not meet the significance criteria required for listing on the California Register of Historic Resources, and accordingly, the residence does not constitute a historic resource for our purposes, and its demolition does not appear to, or would not eliminate elements that are required to maintain the essential character of the neighborhood. The immediate vicinity around 1225 Allen is a well-established neighborhood and features traditional building forms and styles of relatively modest size. Most property frontages feature landscaping and vegetative screening. The proposed residence will feature a low-profile design, will exhibit variations in wall plane, and will be capped with a gabled roof, which is generally consistent with the design and aesthetic of nearby residences. And drought-tolerant landscaping will be installed with the property frontage to soften and screen the proposed residence at a level that's consistent with that exhibited by the surrounding neighborhood. Given that, the project appears to be of a design consistent with the character of the established neighborhood and meets the design review criteria prescribed by the zoning code, staff finds that the proposed configuration of the site, the overall design elements, and proposed materials and finishes are in character with the neighborhood and the community in general. And because of this, staff concludes that the design review findings can be made and recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a demolition permit and design review for the McGraw residence at 1225 Allen. And that's all I have on that, but I did want to point out that there was a mistake on the last page of the resolution, which references a much earlier date, and that needs to be revised. What?
What page is that?
It's, uh, 54, thank you. So that just needs to be revised to read today's hearing date, December 20th, 2016.
Are there any questions, staff? I have a general question. In looking at the, at the water report, they're using fictitious numbers as far as existing this property, as far as I can remember back, has not anything on it, and so they've not used any water, and I, I have a problem with the water report because of that. Anyway, would you like to address that, Noah? I mean, maybe I'm all wet.
So I think the applicant may have a presentation. In the meantime, we can take a look at the water analysis and provide you some response.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name's Bob Branstad. I am a lifelong friend of the applicant and, in this case, his contractor. I live just up the road in Calistoga, and I'm looking forward to building another hybrid core home. This will be the third or fourth one that I've built in the last year or so, and so with no further ado, I'll introduce the project architect, Sean Faber.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Thank you for hearing our project tonight. I'll be very brief because our project planner, Lilly, has done a comprehensive, fantastic job in giving you all the information, so I had a bunch of notes, but I don't need to go through them. Mainly, I just wanted to emphasize that we're using all the green materials, meaning that we're using some modular-type components in the project. The home should be built very, relatively fast. We're using some technology called hybrid core. So as you see on the board there, the beige parts, those are prefabricated cores that will be brought in, and the home essentially built around it. So all the exteriors, roofs, everything, the siding, the windows, materials are all done on-site, handcrafted. We're using all very rich, sturdy materials, or hardy materials for the most part, standing seam roof, all back-to-the-green, all the landscape is drought-tolerant, low-water-use landscape, so we're very conscientious about the, the way we design the home and the resources we'll be using in the design. Essentially, what's gone over is the traditional forms, and if you look at the architecture, we really tried to simplify the forms as much as possible and just keep a real nice, clean, streamlined design, not to take away from the gorgeous neighborhood that's out there. There's a lot of interesting architecture out there, and we're, we're really excited to put this house in that neighborhood and blend in and be a good neighbor out there, and we hope you guys see the value of what we're proposing here. We didn't try to exceed anything or push the boundaries, everything. The house is very low-profile, 19 feet plus or minus, so we're not trying to be imposing neighbors on anyone, just blend into the neighborhood nicely and seamlessly. Mainly, I just wanted to say I'm here for questions as a designer, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at your discretion. Thank you.
There always has to be one, right? My name is John Hawkins. I live at 1234 Hudson. I'm the property immediately behind the 1225 Allen property, and my concern is about my privacy and actually their privacy as well. I built my house 18 years ago on an empty lot, and I put the house at the back of the property in the garage in the front with a courtyard for the express reason of having privacy. Hudson's a very busy street, so this is a chance for me to, to remove myself from that. And the lot behind, it was owned by the Nunez family, was completely covered with trees. It was like a jungle. And so that, even though our houses were, are and were very close together, I never saw them, and they never saw me. It was, I certainly heard them, if you knew the Nunezes, but you never saw each other. Now, I was shocked when the, when the owner, prior to this owner, cut all the trees down. Now, my, I have a two-story house, and my, my wife's in my master bedroom sees every inch of this lot, and their proposed landscaping plan has the, the back patio, their hot tub is right next to my back patio, and hot tub is right next to the Oliver's back play area and hot tub. I think their design is great. I applaud what you've done, looking at it from the front, it's, it's great. What I'm just concerned about is sightlines and privacy in two respects. Lights, because some people aren't so enlightened, some people like to have landscaping lights on that are not indirect, and they leave them on all night. And so what I would propose is ask, is this, this plan shows one tree between our two properties. I would ask that perhaps more evergreen trees could be planted along the perimeter so that we don't have to look at each other, and that any exterior lights on the place are indirect lights so that I don't have to stay up all night with lights on my face. So that's my, otherwise, I think it's great. It is, as you say, it's a very understated design, fits with everything in the neighborhood, is a one-story. It's great. I just have my own little privacy concern. Thank you.
Wait a minute, is there any other public comment?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No problem.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. We're also very aware of your house, and it's lovely. I drove by again just an hour or so ago and understood the, the concept you had when you built it. I noticed that you have started to create a, a green fence between our properties, which I was thankful for. Our landscape plan was intended to build on that, so, excuse me for not addressing the commission directly and looking over my shoulder, but the point is, we're very cognizant of his property, and we want to make sure that we have a screen between our properties, and our landscape plan took that into account, as did the lighting plan. It didn't show up real well on the elevations that were on the screen, but what Sean has proposed is some very low-key downdraft lighting that will illuminate the walkways but not the updraft where it'll be in people's faces. Thank you. Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. I know we don't want to be here all night, but I did bring a, a lighting snapshot sheet, which I'd be happy to share with the neighbor, and I'll pass that around. We're very aware of the privacy issues on both sides, so if you notice, if you take a minute to look in your packet at the architecture, we did put a pretty large overhang in the back, because most of his privacy issues from the second story. So the intent in the design was to maintain his privacy and our privacy, so we put a larger overhang on the back, so when they're looking into the backyard, nobody can see up or no one can see down. So that, that's where the main great-room, living-area component of the house is. So that, that's the design intent on that. And also, I'm not sure if you were able to see it, but I, I did prepare another colorboard just for your use to look at, and again, we're happy to work with the neighbors, and we, we feel like we're on the right track with that, and if, if there's any other suggestions, we're certainly receptive to it.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant?
Would there be any way to, you know, I mean, the far's are, the far's are, and the setbacks are like maximum, maximum thing, like maximum speed limit on the highway, and it's not always a good idea to go the maximum speed limit, depending on the, the surrounding traffic, and I kind of look at the setback things in the same view, depending on the surrounding houses, and 10 feet is so, is not much on the sides, and, you know, I know you try, you want as much square footage as possible, but is there any way to make it 15 or to, you know, the, the front looks great, the 20 feet in the front is great, and, and everything that you said is really, sounds great, the, all, you know, the green stuff, the prefab stuff, all of that sounds great, but that's just always my, because all the houses around there aren't built out to the maximum setbacks, and, and I just...
Yeah, that's a great, fair question. When, when I sat down to design this house, I generally, I'm a former planning commissioner, so I understand, you know, those kind of questions and sensitivity to design. If you really look at the shape of this lot, I mean, we're not really maxing out the setback in too many areas, because the shape, we're hitting points of the setback. It's not the full body of the house, particularly on the sides where we're impacting neighbors, which in, in this one, if you're looking at the house, is generally on the left side. On the right side, if you've been out to the site, there's a huge fence and screening, so that's why we were able to hit the right side versus the left, and in the rear, you can see we're touching points, not a full mass of house along the back. So I don't feel like we're really hitting the setbacks, except in points of the house.
What about the idea of putting more trees between?
It's certainly something we can look at. The only thing I, I worry about, obviously, you know, we want privacy as much as the neighbor. It's certainly something I'm going to talk to the landscape architect tomorrow about. If you want to put that in the conditions, that we explore that and talk to the planner about that, we'd be happy to do that. We're just sensitive, the, I love evergreens myself, but they need some space to really work effectively, and it can shade his north side and our south side, and evergreens on the north side aren't particularly fun, because then your yard's dark, so we could certainly have a dialogue with the neighbor and work that out.
Has there been any dialogue so far with any of the neighbors?
Pertaining to the landscape, but we'd be happy to be, sit down with him in the next few days. I know Christmas is, everyone's a little busy, but if, if that wants to be some suggestion or comments in the conditions, we'd be happy to follow that. Anything else? Thank you.
Closed public comment? Any other questions?
Based on a quick look at the, the water use analysis, I believe the formula they used for their assumptions is in keeping with the water neutrality ordinance, but I'd ask for Deputy Director Smithies to respond to that.
I do remember reviewing this, and it was consistent with our, with our municipal code for the water neutrality policy. I do notice that I'm missing an attachment here to verify that while I'm sitting here, but I do review, remember reviewing this. Also, our, our consultant also reviewed the water analysis, and it's, it's meeting with our traditional submittals in the past. It's consistent.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I, I would like to, I'm going to state this with the condition that the applicant have a, have, I don't know how to word that, have, you know, contact the, the neighbor who was here tonight about the tree, and, was there any other?
Maybe explore options for improving rear yard privacy.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so...
But that leaves it open-ended. It's not saying that anything has to be different, if that's, if they can't find a solution.
That's accurate. That's exactly right.
Correct. Yeah, it has to be mutually, okay. Okay, so I'll move to determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, which exempts demolition of existing structures, and Section 15303, which exempts the construction, single-family, yeah, okay, of, which exempts the construction of single-family residence, and that we accept the required findings and grant the demolition permit and design review approved for the McGraw, approval for the McGraw residence at 1225 Allen Avenue, with the remarks that Noah made, yes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Next item is 5.2, requesting a use permit to operate a 20-seat wine tasting room with retail sales, accessory administrative office space, and outdoor seating in existing retail space at 1234 Adams Street. There will be two full-time employees and one part-time employee. Hours of operation will be between the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., seven days a week, with special events limited to one per month, with a potential for hours to be extended until 9:00 p.m. No extra... to be extended until 9:00 p.m. No exterior modifications are proposed as part of this permit application. May I have a staff report, please?
I'm going to interject. I need to recuse myself due to a personal relationship with the applicant's family.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
It would be appropriate at this time for Commissioner Monette to make a disclosure. We had discovered earlier today that Commissioner Monette had expressed certain opinions about the project prior to the public hearing and that those cast doubt on whether Commissioner Monette would be able to be fair and impartial, as the law requires for this hearing. We've discussed this with the applicant. The applicant is prepared to proceed this evening, provided that Commissioner Monette make a disclosure of what her prior expressions were. And I think more importantly, express that she has not formed any opinions, final opinions about this project and is, to the contrary, prepared to listen to all the evidence this evening presented in the public hearing with a completely open mind. Will put aside any former expressions of opinion that she may have made about the project and will make her decision tonight solely on the basis of the evidence presented at this hearing. I believe that the applicant, the applicant has expressed to me prior to the meeting, they are willing to proceed this evening and are willing to waive any objection, provided that Commissioner Monette does make that disclosure and those statements and assurances of her ability to proceed in a fair and impartial way this evening.
Thanks. Yeah, oops. Yes, I do have a statement and I'll read it or, you know, try to say it and read it at the same time. But so that my opinion about direct sales of alcohol and other mind altering drugs, legal or not, within 300 feet of school campuses and other youth-serving institutions, has been clearly stated and has been on public record for years. So that's, my opinion has been out there. That being said, any comments by me to others about this particular application, while in keeping with what is already on public record, are regrettable. And to the extent that they betray a predisposition toward a bias when hearing this item, I am, you know, I regret that. I spoke at length with a representative from ABC Regional Office in Santa Rosa, both yesterday and today. And as a result of my discussion with her, it is my thinking that since the use of these premises, which is what my concerns are about, has already been designated to include tasting rooms by the city, the best place to challenge that use is not with the city at this time or in this meeting about this particular application, but within the process of the applicant's application for a duplicate Master's O2 license with ABC. So I do believe that I can address the issues that I think are important with this application tonight, independently of my opinion about the use of the property, which needs to be decided in another venue at another time and is not appropriate here. If the applicants want me recused, I understand that and would willingly comply. If not, I feel that I can review and discuss this application fairly and objectively, given my publicly known thoughts in general about the bigger picture regarding drug-free zones around school campuses. So I am totally open to hear specifics about this project, you know, as openly as I can be with those general ideas that go way beyond this project. I'm not sure if that's...
So at this point, it would be appropriate for the chair to ask the applicant whether that satisfies them and whether, given that disclosure and that statement by Commissioner Monette, the applicant wishes to proceed this evening to waive any objection to Commissioner Monette's involvement in this, or rather, would prefer to have this matter continued to a point when Commissioner Monette can recuse herself and the vacant seat on the commission can be filled by the city council sometime in 2017.
Can I hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Brian Russell, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, Commissioner Monette, for your comments. We feel comfortable moving forward that you'll be able to make an impartial and fair decision on our use permit application.
Okay, thank you.
I have a staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Kistner. So the Ladera tasting room includes a request for a use permit to reintroduce a tasting room at the property at 1234 Adams Street. Specifically, the applicant is requesting to operate a 20-seat wine tasting room with retail sales, accessory administrative office space, and outdoor seating. There will be two full-time employees and one part-time employee. The tasting room would operate from the hours of 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., seven days a week, with special events limited to one per month, with a potential for hours to be extended until 9:00 p.m. No exterior modifications are proposed as part of the use permit application. And five parking spaces will be provided at the rear of the site. The subject property is located in Santa Elena's Commercial Business District, which allows retail, personal service uses, offices, restaurants, hotels, motels, and the like. The intent is for the CB district to remain primarily locally serving in character. New uses which serve both local residents and tourists are allowed. However, uses which are primarily tourist-serving are not permitted. In the past, the subject property has served as a bookstore, wine tasting room, and most recently as office space. Under the CB zoning designation, wine tasting rooms are conditionally allowed and subject to code provisions stipulating that wines sold must be produced from a minimum of 75% Napa Valley grapes and must be labeled Napa Valley or a sub-appellation thereof. Consistent with the zoning code, the applicant has provided a statement saying that the Ladera wine tasting room will sell wines in accordance with those provisions. The code also stipulates one parking space for each four seats for eating or drinking establishments. Accordingly, the tasting room will provide five parking spaces that are existing at the rear of the site. Given the limited level of modifications, the site is expected to continue to be consistent with the development standards enumerated in the zoning code and as a local and tourist-serving use can be found to be consistent with the code requirements and the overall intent of the general plan. The Ladera wine tasting room will operate in an existing building located within the commercial core of Santa Elena. The proposed use is expected to be compatible with surrounding uses, which consist of boutique retail shops, artisanal food purveyors, restaurants, and upscale wine tasting rooms. Further, there's no expectation that it would be in direct conflict with the goals and objectives established for the CBD, for the CB district. Given its location, the tasting room is within walkable distance of many other land uses and therefore its impacts to traffic would be limited. The proposed use is not expected to be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, comfort, or general welfare of persons in the neighborhood. And as a local and visitor-serving use, the tasting room would be expected to support the development of responsible visitor-serving components of the city's economy and serve as a valuable resource for jobs, tax revenue, and cultural amenities. As such, staff finds that the proposed project is generally consistent with the findings required to approve a use permit. Notwithstanding staff's general consistency findings, it should be pointed out that there has been some contention surrounding the appropriateness of new tasting rooms, namely that there has been disagreement as to how well tasting rooms align with the code provisions and general plan policies that promote locally serving uses. As described in the staff report, given that the proposed use is a tasting room and is intended to serve both tourists and locals, it can be considered acceptable under the explicit provisions of the zoning code. Tasting rooms provide a product marketed to both local and tourist populations and often provide locally serving jobs and other economic benefit from their operation. It has, however, been argued that tasting rooms are more so tourist-serving and that Santa Elena already exhibits an over-concentration of tasting rooms. Based on this reasoning, it has been asserted that increasing this concentration would not be readily consistent with the general plan and zoning code policies as it would not necessarily promote a primarily locally-serving CB district. On the other hand, it has been equally contended that the wine industry is a critical part of the economy and quality of life in Santa Elena and that both local residents and tourists patronize the wineries and tasting facilities throughout the valley and derive substantial benefits from these uses. Further, the operation of a tasting room for a Napa County winery directly provides local jobs and indirect support for the agricultural industry, which is an integral component of the local, of the local economy and environmental setting. As such, because these use, this use serves and benefits both local and, local residents and tourists, they can be found to be consistent with the general purpose of the CB district and meet the locally-serving requirements of the general plan and zoning code. This interpretation is also supported by Municipal Code Section 17.48.030, which expressly makes winery tasting rooms a conditionally permitted use as opposed to prohibiting them outright. Last, this is supported by the past approval of a use permit to operate a tasting room at the existing site in 2010. The Ladera tasting room would be substantially similar in operation and intensity to that previously approved. Given the varying interpretations of the nuances of the code and general plan policies, the commission may want to consider this further. But given that in general, the tasting room does appear to meet applicable policies, as I just described, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the proposed use permit. And that is all I have, except like the last item. The last page of the resolution has incorrect date, so it needs to be revised to read today's date, December 20th.
Any questions, staff? Bobby?
Um, yeah.
Grace, do you have any questions, staff?
Yeah.
All right, I'll open public...
I actually do. I'm sorry. How did you address the idea of noise, particularly in terms of the special events?
There's no amplified, there, the stipulations already say no amplified music, acoustic or...
Yeah, it's conditioned. So no, yeah, I believe that...
Will there be outdoor, will people be in these, there'll be outdoor, on the outdoor patio?
There will be no amplified music, I believe, whatsoever, and no acoustic or amplified music outside.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yeah.
Will there be events outside?
Yeah.
You allow, you allow acoustic music, it looks like indoors, correct?
Outside.
Special events?
I believe so, yeah, indoors.
But people be drinking and talking and laughing and stuff on the patio, most likely, during the events? I'm not sure how many people...
I would think that that is a possibility.
Yeah, okay. Just all right. So, okay, okay, I have questions of the...
Of the applicant. Okay.
You're on.
Thank you, Chair Kistner.
You're welcome.
Brian Russell, on behalf of the applicant, Ladera Winery, thank you so much, Lily and Noah, you've done a terrific job with the staff report. Appreciate all the effort you put into it. So this is a fairly straightforward application. We have here, as you know, Tambor Bay was approved in 2010. Grace, I believe you were one of the commissioners that approved that project and operated for a number of years. And what we did is, we don't actually legally believe that we actually have to be here when, because when a staff, I mean, when a, when a, when a planning commission approves a conditional use permit, typically conditional use permits run with the land unless the landowner is given notice in a proper hearing to extinguish the permit, which never happened. So we believe actually this permit continues to exist today and we shouldn't even have to go through this exercise. That being said, we are here today to expedite the process as much as we can and hopefully we can move forward quickly. You guys are in a unique situation. What we did is with the previous Tambor Bay use permit approval, we basically cut and paced that permit. So we haven't changed anything. We don't have any changes to it, to what we're proposing now. So you have a luxury of, you know, usually as a planning commissioner, even on the, on the residents that you saw, you have to kind of guess and anticipate what that might look like in the future. What we are doing is a use that has already been approved and operated there at the exact same location. So you know what it's going to be like. It's going to be a quiet, upscale tasting room operated by a local operator, a local winery. People live here in Santa Elena, have lived here for almost 20 years. So they're, they're local folks, a local winery, local grapes, just providing a upscale tasting room experience here in Santa Elena. And that's, that's really it. There's nothing more to it than that. And here to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, what, do you, oh... Sorry. What will these special events be, I mean, what are they, for club members or for, I mean, what, can you say something more about what they will be?
Of course. So the events will not be outside, just so that can, we can, we can eliminate noise and music and all those, those things. Typically, very, very small, intimate events, usually less than 10 people, more like a, more like an eight to 10-person food and wine pairing event, not a big blowout, farmstead party.
Okay, and not, not small weddings?
No.
Okay.
They're not interested in...
Wine-related, wine-related...
They're not interested in that at all. It's a very high-end, low-volume operation. Any more questions?
Oh, yeah. What will the parking, so even at those events, there won't be like 30 cars or anything?
Absolutely not.
Sounds like there are five parking places off, so there will just be a few. And the events will be in the evening or, or on weekends only or what's...
It's not really an event. I mean, we would, we almost classify it like a, like a, usually they, they see about four to six people in a tasting. Maybe it will go to 10 as a tasting, like a food and wine pairing.
Okay.
That type of thing. So it won't be influx of folks like you would anticipate happening at a wedding or something like that. Absolutely like the complete opposite. Think about, like a, like a small, intimate tasting experience.
No more?
No questions. Straight forward.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have you members have the right to respond to any comments that might come up?
Is there any public comment?
I was woefully underprepared for this emotionally. I feel like I'm, I felt like I was having a heart attack when she was making it sound as though there's just like no impact at all and it's basically a school zone. So I, I just don't know when the city of Santa Elena lost all incentive to protect our children from intoxicated drivers. And so I think the underpinning of everything is, is that people don't get drunk on wine. Also, I don't understand this really low-key, eh, not very many people are going to be there. Why do you open up a business and not want anybody there? So I don't see how it makes any sense for me to point out any of these, like code 2378...
Ma'am, excuse me. Can you please speak into the microphone? I'm not sure if it's on. So I don't know how it does any good for me to quote to you what the PTA and the Alcohol Bureau thinks about serving wine near children. Because I'm feeling as though this must have happened with the wine bar across from the high school, where it was just whitewashed and undersold and no big deal. Well, why do you put a alcohol-selling, oh, the clock starts on me. Why do you put the alcohol-selling facility there and then say, but we don't really want to sell much alcohol. It's very low-key. This is in a zone with a church and a school. And your intent is to get people to drink. It's a very tight space. There are children there. And now this press release comes out about the wine bar across from the high school. And it says that the city will be installing solar-powered radar speed signs. These improvements are installed. Their success will support, will need the support of students, parents, the entire community, the children. We need to protect ourselves. I'm Grayson, against the people that potentially are intoxicated having, nothing to do...
That project is not on the...
Oh, I beg your pardon, because what I feel like is that we're starting again, this was a mistake to put the last one there. Now let's keep it there. Let's talk about what the staff and the applicants think and let's not talk about children and drunk drivers. The reason why that you don't want to put these types of things in school zones is because children are present and they can be killed by a drunk driver because they won't know to get out of the way. Do we need to have a bunch of children mowed down before we stop this? This feels like insanity. And that whole staff thing where she just said that nobody's come up with a single reason why this isn't a good idea, it's in a school zone. California law recognizes that alcohol producers and sellers are incompatible with churches, schools, and other places that children congregate. The California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control has the independent authority to deny licenses to wineries, tasting room, wine bars if the proposed businesses would be too close in proximity to a church or school. Depending on the license type, the restrictions are as follows. Again, why do I even read this to you? Somehow, somebody's found a loophole. This makes my brain want to explode inside my head. These are children and you're inviting business to invite adults to drink and then get in their cars and expect the children and their parents and the community to get out of the way? I don't know. I don't know what's happened to this town. And so I will take my last 10 seconds, and my daughter's having a birthday party right now, and I will leave. But I don't know what's happened to this town. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Public comment? Do you have any rebuttal?
Obviously, we would never serve anybody to the point of illegal intoxication where they're going to get into a car. Almost all of the people that would be visiting the tasting room are either walking on the streets and already visiting another establishment here in Santa Elena or have another mode of transportation besides driving themselves. That being said, we're going to completely comply with the alcohol beverage control licensing and the TTB to address your concerns and, you know, it's not a bar, it's a high-end tasting room at the end of the day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, I live not too far, far enough to be able to be here, but not too far from the location. And, you know, when it was Tambor Bay, exactly as Mr. Russell's saying, it's very quiet, people sat casually out on the patio, but it was not by any stretch of the imagination any more lively or rambunctious or had any more activity than we see next door at the coffee shop, and they are open till 8 o'clock at night. So I think that that area already has precedent in terms of this kind of activity. Tambor Bay has been there, so I think we'd be inconsistent if we're not supporting this applicant as well. In terms of the design, they haven't changed anything on the permit. You know, I understand the citizen commentary, however, there are a lot of other legislations in place and limitations, including tips training for any servers that they're having on-site. So if there's a problem with serving intoxicated guests, there are other issues that the applicant will contend with during their operating. So again, what we're looking at is a use permit as it relates to this particular application and really has other operating businesses or prior approved permits have no bearing in terms of other locations, only at this location. So for me, I think that they're meeting what I need to know in order to support the applicant and provided they manage it appropriately, which I think you've put in through here in terms of keeping a license, they can't keep their license if they don't follow rules and restrictions already in place in terms of responsible beverage alcohol service in the state of California. So I think that would be something that would kind of rein in the likelihood that they're going to run afoul of alcohol service. So, and again, I do support the concerns, but that is, you know, our entire community and our fabric is interwoven with the wine industry. So this, I think we have, we look at things more broadly and we look at things in terms of how this applicant fits into our community and I support it.
Yeah, I was, you know, I appreciate everything that Mr. Russell said and I also heard the public, you know, what she was talking, what Marina was talking about. And my first, my first finding, we issue number two, has been, you know, I feel comfortable about that, the noise, I don't, that doesn't seem to be a problem and the traffic scene doesn't seem to be a problem, although I have to, there is no way you can control the intake of alcohol and, because you don't know how someone, how much someone is drunk before they come in. So, you know, I mean, there's no way you can control that. And, you know, I think there's a lot of research, there is no safe level of alcohol to drive. We have laws that's, you know, but, you know, I don't think we need to argue that here. Obviously, this town has a lot of people driving who have BAL of whether it's legal or not legal, but I, the only thing I'm thinking is, number 10, that, you know, I'm not sure about the precedent setting for another wine tasting room. I do, however, acknowledge that this is already a permitted location, so that's also no longer a concern of mine. I am still concerned about, about having, you know, I mean, you can't control if the people are going to be walking there or not. I understand that, you know, it seems likely that maybe they won't be, but there will be people driving in and out of a driveway there, potentially during the school hours when there are so many children there. There's a preschool at the church and there's the elementary school and then there's Carnegie Building, which has, which has kids coming in too. So I'm wondering if the tasting room could have later hours, like it wouldn't be open during school hours or, you know, and could stay open later in the evening, because the noise issue doesn't seem to be a problem, so staying later would not pose a problem. I don't know, I'm just, it just, I'm just thinking after the kids are gone, then there's, you know, my worry, I do have a worry about all those kids being there and possibly people coming from your high-end tasting room and not, you know, and not, and driving their cars away. So I don't, I'm just wondering if that, if that would be a possibility, that might be a deal breaker in terms of, of being profitable to do it. I don't know. Again, these issues I think are more, are more appropriately dealt with ABC than here necessarily, but I do still have that concern in response to the public and in response to public safety issues. So I don't know what you guys think.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, Commissioner, that it would be better if we didn't have tasting rooms within the state requirements, but we do not have that in our code. And so I think, after what Attorney Brown says, I think that the appropriate place for that discussion is with the ABC and not with the Santa Elena Planning Commission.
Right, but the public safety issue is what I'm talking about, that's not the same thing. I'm, you know, the cars and the traffic around the children.
No, I'm not, I'm making my statement.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, thank you. And therefore, I will, I would be happy to approve the project. I do think that when we start on the new zoning codes, that we want to look at this. I think that maybe our codes are incorrect, but they are what they are and I think we have to abide by them. So unless the attorney over here has some argument with what I'm saying, I will gladly approve the project.
So you don't think that, what about you? Do you think that a modification in hours might be...
I don't think you, I don't think you can restrict their hours because I don't think, my personal opinion is that they have to operate within the hours that they think that they can make, they can make what they're supposed to be doing.
And we've had a precedent in the past where we've asked wineries not to be open late because they go in direct competition of restaurants, which is kind of the traditional Napa Valley courtesy, why most wineries stop business around 6 o'clock.
This doesn't seem like that kind of operation at all, although...
But I think that, I think you're going in a direction that...
Well, I guess my question is, is this when there are special events, will that, they've asked to have the hours extended for those?
But those are limited, I mean, there's a limited number of special events that can happen in a year. I think that to ask them to deviate from traditional business hours doesn't make sense. I couldn't support that as a reasonable...
I'm just bringing it up, I would feel much more comfortable if it weren't happening during school hours, so, but I'm hearing what you're saying and I understand.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I can move to determine that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA Section 15301, existing facilities as the operation of a business within an existing private structure involving a negligible expansion of use beyond that existing at the time of the lead agency's determination, and move to accept the required findings enumerated in Municipal Code Section 17.168040 and adopt a resolution approving a use permit for the proposed Ladera Tasting Room located at 1234 Adam Street.
That was too easy.
I know, should have remembered, sorry.
I second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
No.
Thank you all. Do you have any department reports that you want to...
Just a brief report tonight, Chair Kissner. I wanted to notify the public and the commission that the Culinary Institute of America's dormitory project and kind of modification to the activities at Greystone is moving forward through the process and a mitigated negative declaration was posted for a 20-day public review and comment period. It's available on the city's website, it's available at City Hall, and that comment period is, stretches from December 9th till January 3rd. Due to the holidays, staff added some additional days to the legal requirements in order just to try to accommodate some people's schedules. So just wanted to notify the public of that.
Is there some way that when we get that out, better than just on the website and stuff? Can we do that, Jesse?
I wrote a story about it.
I really think we need to get that out to the public. I think it's a big interest, I've been getting a lot of calls on it and I don't think people are getting, I don't think we communicate the best we can, that we should. And I'm hoping that some of these big projects, maybe we can get to the newspaper so that people do read the newspapers, they don't read this lovely website we're putting together now.
Sure, sure, and we are working on website improvements, but we can make sure that the e-news system is utilized and we do often issue press releases, maybe not always rising to the level of breaking news for the start, but we do issue a lot and so we'll try to continue working with them to get more...
How long have you extended the comment period?
It's extended till January 3rd, so we added five days onto the 20-day requirement.
See, it's all over the holiday and that's, that's the problem.
Can you just put it, can you just put a couple copies and binders at the library? People will be out there over the holiday.
Are there copies at the City Hall?
There are copies at City Hall, or a copy, we'll happily email it directly to anyone. Hard copies are provided to each of you in your packets. Again, it's available on the city's website for download and we're happy to provide it in as many ways and forms as possible and we definitely are interested in providing access to that document and receiving as many comments as the public feels as they'd like to make. The timing was unfortunate, but we can't really stop business due to, you know, specific holidays, but we do try to make accommodations as we're able. And so as of right now, the hearing date proposed for that is January 17th here at the Planning Commission. So that, there's also some requirements and responsibilities put on the staff at the closing of a public comment period. Staff has a responsibility to respond to each and every one of those comments that's received and so we do need some time in order to be able to accomplish that response to comments, get all that into a format and put to the Planning Commission and their packets in time to meet that deadline. So there are some dates that we're working backwards from. We were hoping to have it before the commission at this meeting, however, that wasn't able to be accomplished with the noticing requirements, all those things with the SEQA documents. So unfortunately, that did not...
It's January 3rd?
January 3rd is the close of the public comment period on the mitigated negative declaration and then January 17th is the Planning Commission hearing date for that project.
And Noah, and chairperson, or, excuse me, Chairman Kissner, I am an employee of Behringer and we are providing some easements around this project, so I believe I will have to recuse myself. I would like clarity around that, but my guess is I will, because I've been involved in some of the planning and securing of easements.
Okay, we'll have the city attorney's office look at that issue. Obviously, with the being down one commissioner, attendance is crucial.
I know, well, that's why I want to tell you now, so that if we have to continue, I mean, it's something the applicant should consider.
Definitely.
Because likely I would need to recuse.
Perfect. And other commissioners, please look at potential conflicts and let staff know as soon as possible. So just wanted to let the public know and the commission know of that and do apologize for the timing of the holidays, but we were intending to get it done sooner, but it didn't happen. Also, we're continuing to recruit for the counter technician position at the city, so we've been, we've been down some staff. Zinyah's been very, very helpful in backfilling that position and essentially doing two jobs for the city and we've been able to maintain our development review timelines, just barely, but were able to do it. And so I just wanted to give a status update, we did complete the first round of interviews. We're moving on to second round of interviews as quickly as possible and we do hope to have that position filled by the end of January, which should allow our customer service levels to pick up a little bit. I feel we've been doing a good job, given where we're at, but I am asking for the public to be a little bit patient with us and just understand the staffing levels that we're dealing with. And then also, along those lines, there will be only one planner in the office from, over the week between Christmas and New Year's, and that will not be myself or Senior Planner Heacock, Lilly Bianco is filling in for us. And so again, just the public, please, if you feel the need to talk about planning or building permits before the New Year, just please be accommodating and understanding of our, of our staffing limitations. That's the end of my report. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Meeting is adjourned. 7 o'clock.